So it is 7:04. I'll call the meeting to order. And I'll ask that you please rise and join me in the pledge of the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Uh, roll. Doug White. Steve Haynes.
Here.
Tom Fuller. Mike Powers. Brad Bender, here. Okay, uh, we have several changes to the agenda additions, if you will. On the second line, we need to insert June 17th minutes. Right after that, Shelley Taylor would like to give a hazard mitigation report. Under old business, we need to sign the memorandum of understanding with the union. And under new business, we need to add the Assistant Treasurer, Tanya Powers, as a backup signature. Are there any other additions or deletions to the agenda?
I would like to add that we talked about the transfer station someplace.
And where would you like to do that? You want to do that right before, um, old business?
Sure.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to-
I'll make the motion that we set the agenda as amended.
I'll second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of June 1st, June 17th, and July 15th.
I'll make the motion that we approve them.
Any discussion? There being no discussion, all in favor of approving those three sets of minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion is passed unanimously. Hazard mitigation report, Shelley Taylor.
So we met, um, last Wednesday? Yes, last Wednesday. With Stephanie and everybody on the committee with the exception of Tom, who I understand is very busy. I get it. Um, and we're at the point in the process where we need to really identify the roads that are at most risk, the roads that call, versus the bridges, you know, whatever. And we were hoping, you know, to pick Tommy's brain about that as the road commissioner. But with Tom not being able to attend, we had a couple of suggestions. One was Stephanie suggested she would come here and work with Larry during work hours to, um, for what Larry would, or what they would think is the most hazardous. I have a map that we can mark up to identify all of our hazards in the town. Um, and Tom Johnston alternately suggested that he could come and ride with Larry or Lori, whichever, and, you know, go road by road and see where the dangers and, you know, where, where our most hazardous areas could be during the weather event, be it, you know, a huge snowstorm or another flood event or whatever. So what I'm looking for, I guess, is your suggestion on how you'd like to go about it.
I think if Stephanie can come down and ride with Larry, that would be-
Stephanie wasn't looking to ride with Larry, she was flipping into a chat with Larry.
Okay, well-
Tom did volunteer. I personally think Tom has a, has a background in the town. It might be more beneficial for Tom to be the one to do it, and he did volunteer. Um, that, that would be my suggestion.
Yeah, I mean, I know that she has a map with red, yellow-
It's here.
And, uh, when we met with her up on Scottsville Road, she could stop with her iPad and tell you, basically within a couple of feet-
Right.
What sections were bad. And I think it would be good to have her come, or somebody-
I don't care. I mean, personally, I don't care. I can't do it.
Right.
So, um, you know, with that-
If Tom Johnston wanted to meet with her and if we want, I would think throw Larry in there too.
Well, Larry needs to be in there for sure.
Yeah, I think if the three would do it, that would be awesome.
I'm sorry, I don't know these people. What's Stephanie's?
Stephanie Bork is with the Rutland Regional Planning Commission, and she helps out with, um, hazard mitigation, making maps of, um, potentially-
Like areas where we have issues with runoff, erosion. Yep.
Every, every town has to have a hazard mitigation, and this time, for the first time, um, we're going to be doing it in conjunction with Mount Taber. That's, that's new. Because we have shared services like the water district and the fire district and all that stuff. So, yeah, if that's what you want to do, I'm happy to send out an email to all interested parties. And we will be meeting again on Wednesday and then again the week after. That should go a long way to buttoning it up.
Hey, it's a good place to start.
Okay, how's it going? First for me?
Sounds good to me.
Okay. I don't think we need a motion on her if everybody's-
I wouldn't think so.
I wouldn't think we need a motion, but-
Just your glossing, basically.
You have it.
Thank you.
Just let Larry know when she's gonna be there, so he's not-
Does Larry, well, I can, I can go with my Janice. I'll let Larry know. I was gonna say I can email Larry or clue him in the trail. I don't know if he knows.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if Larry does email or not, so-
Yeah, that's why I'm looking at your phone. Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll just, I'll have Janice, um, you know, if I am just free, I'd stop and chat with him, but I, I look, so I can-
Right. But as long as Janice can let Larry know, I don't see where there's an issue.
Okay. Sounds, sounds good. And I'm sure Stephanie will probably reach out to Larry General for it too.
Yeah, and I know, when we were looking at Scottsville Road, they were, had a good line of communication.
That's good. Scottsville Road's hazardous?
Well, I think everybody's complaining about Baker-Burka, not Scottsville, actually.
Yeah.
I'm sure.
Okay.
I know what we've done on Scottsville has helped with this torrent of rain we've had. We've had a lot, a lot less washing than we had had.
I haven't been over it for a couple of weeks. Um, my only question is, if the transfer station discussion has anything to do with the planning commission at this point?
Nope.
Okay, good.
At this point, it has to do with courtesy inspection that we had last week.
Okay. All right, then if it doesn't, I'll leave you too.
Good night, Shelley.
Thank you, Shelley.
Thank you, Shelley.
See ya.
Our next item on the agenda will be a motion to approve a change of address for Nancy Lee Kennedy's liquor license. The letter here from Nancy Lee Kennedy that says she would like to relocate the wine shop and sundries from 12 North Main Street, which is the yellow building on the east side of the road, to Danby Village Marketplace, which is the former Nichols store at 9 North Main Street. The Italian deli owner, Tamara Musto, has indicated that she is surrendering her wine beer license this week, and she is no longer at the deli. She's requesting permission of the select board to move the wine shop across the street.
I make a motion, we accept the change of address.
Okay, I'll second it.
I had heard that, uh, Italian deli's moving into Wallingford.
Any other discussion on that?
The only thing I'm curious about is, well, does she need to refill the form, or can we just amend?
Well, that's, yeah, that's, this is what was needed according to Janice and the liquor.
Okay. As long as that's all that needed, then-
Yep. And of course, our motion at a meeting. So, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, then we have the second reading of the town purchasing policy, which we talked about at the last meeting, and basically, I'll just read it so everybody knows. When purchases or services, contracts for public work other than professional services are needed. The following thresholds should be followed and the correct level of quote or bid used. Purchase orders. All purchase orders and services over $250 require a purchase order be submitted. A PO number must be produced before these purchases or services are rendered to ensure that funds are available. Purchase local and feasible. Written quotes. Purchases and services between 5,000 and 20,000, this is what we changed, require soliciting three written quotes and the approval of the road commissioner and/or select board members. Said quotes must be documented, date, price, vendor, and/or contractor, and maintained in a purchase service log binder. This binder with all written quotes in chronological date order is to be kept for the year and submitted at budget time. Competitive bidding. Purchases and services of $20,000 or more require solicitation of competitive bidding. All bids must be properly advertised in at least one of the town's official newspapers. Utilities, wages withholding, insurance, notes due, and other expenditures shall be exempt from the purchasing policy. Emergency purchases and services in the event of an emergency, purchases and services are exempt from the procedures described herein with the approval of the road commissioner and/or the select board members. An emergency situation shall be defined as one which threatens the lives or health of people, property of the municipality, or the delivery necessary, or to deliver necessary services to the citizens of Danby. So, entertain a motion to-
I'll make the motion that we approve it, adopt it.
I'll second it.
Discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So that passes unanimously. I will sign this and I will send it around for you fellows. This is the 12th day of August. There you go. Okay, the next item is to approve Chamber and Economic Development invoice of $1,300. This used to be the Rutland Regional Chamber of Commerce, and they changed their name to Chamber and Economic Development, and they are thanking us for our commitment to their regional marketing initiative in the amount of $1,300. Basically, those for advertising for the region.
Is that pretty much a normal thing?
Um, you know, I-
Something I'm not familiar with, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, no, it's, it's kind of new to me, and he made a presentation at a board meeting, I want to say in February, maybe it was January, uh, how they have revamped things, changed their name, and, uh, their goal is to enhance and protect the quality of life in Rutland County. To do so, we must increase the skilled workforce pool from which businesses and industries can hire employees. In turn, this will grow our tax base, um, in our communities to support amenities which everyone deserves. Our energy, attention, and attention is focused on growing the population to benefit those with whom we currently share our region, as well as those who will join us in the
I remember that guy being here, but I don't remember what we did with him.
Um, we asked him some questions, like was he including Mount Taber? And he said yes, and, uh, they were going to keep, um, like a log of properties that were for sale if people were interested in moving here.
Yeah, if I remember right, old Doug was pretty irritated because he said most of the places had already been sold here in town. Because I remember that much that-
Yeah, that's us.
The feeling was that they weren't really gonna benefit us a lot, I didn't think, but this is a bill for what they've done.
Um, I believe this is a bill for not so much what they have done, but what they would like to do, regional marketing. So it's, it's like, it would be Danby's share of their marketing budget for the year.
Do you remember if we, at that time, if we agreed to-
We thought it was a good thing.
Well, if we agreed to it, I'll make the motion that we continue and pay the $1,300.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 So, um, this, you can hand right over to Jennifer, I guess. Okay, the next item on the agenda is a motion to approve town garage improvements. So, as you know, sometime back, um, we made a decision that we were not going to build a new town garage or relocate it, and that we would spend money improving this one, and the money from the sale of the town hall up at Four Corners was earmarked specifically for this purpose, and, um, we have a yearly, uh, capital budget that we put $20,000 a year in for improvements, which is how we fixed this building a couple of years ago. So, I have been talking with people, one of whom is Ski Door, because the two overhead doors, um, are in dire need of replacement, actually. I thought we could repair them, and I kind of got chastised by the people there. He said, well, now this is the fourth time I've given you a bid. And I said, well, not me. And I didn't realize they had put bids in before. But, um, I will be getting a written bid from him. I called him today, and he said he just couldn't get it here in time for the meeting, but it's roughly $3,000 a door. And they are, uh, what did you call them? R18 steel insulated doors that they supply to the state of Vermont on-
Very good door.
It's a very good door.
Sure, you're in and installed?
Um, yes.
Wow.
Well, um-
Roughly.
Roughly, yeah. So what I'm seeking as part of this motion would be not to exceed like $7,000, and, because I don't want to really wait another month.
Right.
Um, he said if we had done this pre-COVID, we could have saved like $2,000.
But even if, triggering a door installed for the size of those doors-
They're 14 feet.
And that was old? Now, does that include new openers, or just the door?
I did not ask.
Okay, that would be-
That would be-
But even on the door, installed for that size door, that's not a bad price. Because those are commercial changes.
Mm-hmm. And they do have windows in them. Uh, so, as you know, the roof has been leaking for a long time, so I spoke with three people about fixing the roof and doing other improvements to the building, which I'll get into in a second. The one is this fellow up here on Danby Road, whose name is Michael Taylor, and they've owned property here for a long time, but now they're kind of in residence. And he was not interested in doing any of the carpenter work, or the painting, or anything like that. He just wants to put a new roof on the building for $22,650. I spoke with Donald Nichols, and I spoke with Paul Short, and I spent quite a bit of time with both of them, and, uh, I've been after Donald to give us a bid, and finally, the other day, I sent Donald a text message and said, if you're bidding, we need it for Thursday night, and he said that he would pass on it at this time. Thank you very much. So the other bid is from Paul Short, who did a lot of work on this building when we did it, and he's going to do all the carpenter work on the building. Now, this includes replacing damaged and missing boards. The back of the building, in between the rafters, is nothing but fiberglass insulation, so we're actually gonna put blocks of wood in there. He will fix the metal roof, because what's happened is, the roof is screwed down, so the washers, after basically 50 years, have disintegrated. The sunbeats on it all day long. So they're gonna put in new screws and, um, hit them, you know, with some clock. He will power wash the building, prime it and paint it, and put in the emergency door that we've been told we need to have in the back, because we don't have an escape exit from the quote-unquote "office" in there. And he will do that work for $12,500. So what I am looking for is, um, go ahead.
But that says labor only.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we have to buy the paint and the door and the wood and the screws.
And he was replacing the metal roofing, or he's just repairing it?
Repairing it. There, um, basically, um, it just needs new screws. There are a couple holes that need to be fixed.
So realistically, we're gonna have a couple hundred dollars into materials?
We're gonna probably have about-
1,500, 12, 200?
Yeah, I'm thinking 1,200.
Well, if you've got some boards and whatever-
Right.
Just say, say 2 grand.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, the paint alone, I figured at $1,200.
Yeah, so we could even be up to 2,500 in material.
It's two coats of paint.
Yeah, a door is gonna drop you about 300 bucks.
And the door would not have hardware on the outside, it's just an escape hatch. So that would, uh, hopefully cut down on the temptation to burglarize the building from there.
Well, I'd make the motion that we get Paul Short to do the work.
And, um, can you include in there-
We-
-not to exceed-
For the door?
Yeah.
And I'd make the motion that we hire Ski Door to replace the overhead doors, not to exceed $7,000.
Okay, made by Haynes and Powers. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. So Tom Fuller is still paving down in Bennington this evening, and, uh, said he probably wouldn't be finished down there till 8:00 or 8:30, and the road commissioner's report is that the road crew has been cutting brush, and that storm damage has been minimal. So, uh, I'm passing that on to you. And next, we will go to the transfer station discussion, and I'll turn it over to Steve.
So we, uh, we were, had a courtesy inspection last week, and they found three things that were wrong. One, they had listed was our posted time. It says 7:00 to 4:00, and they advised me it was 8:00 to 4:00, but in looking at the amended plan that we have, the sign is right, so that one is gone. Uh, the other issues they had were household batteries were being stored in a cat litter bucket outside. They need to have their own container and be inside. And the last two things that off the top of my head I remember is the scrap steel that was behind the building. And they said e-waste, but when I was talking with Mark, neither one of us could find any e-waste in the picture. There was some household garbage, or, there was a box fan, um, I don't remember. There was two or three things that you plugged in the wall, but they weren't computers, or, so he said, you know, it really wasn't e-waste, but we couldn't have it behind the building. And then Cliffy had, or somebody had bags of cans and bottles just behind the dumpster that can't be there. So we've either got to get rid of the scrap metal and get those cans undercover, or we need to get a place to put them. We can have a place designated for scrap steel and returnables, but before we can do that, we have to amend our plan to include it and have a new site map drawn as to where that container's gonna be.
Now, this ties in with a couple of comments I'd heard from the public in the last couple of weeks, where how come we don't have a designated place where they could bring steel? People aren't, you know, they just would, a lot of homeowners would love to just come down and throw it in the dumpster, and if the town could get money out of it, fine.
The question I would have, though, as far as that goes, would be, would we get enough out of the scrap to pay for a dumpster?
Well, you know, you may call somebody that Hubbard that would throw a dumpster down here-
To take the scrap?
For free, as long as we, because, you know, if you've got to sort it by 10 or number one, or, if you just want to throw your steel in it and they come get it and they get what they can out of it, it may not cost the town any of it, which I wouldn't mind an option like that. If it keeps people from throwing it over the bank, it doesn't cost the town any money.
Right.
If we could get money out of it, that's even better, but-
So what day of the week was this, when this inspection took place? Was it a day-
I saw the email, but I don't remember the day.
Was it the day that the dump was open?
Yeah, because Cliffy was in one of the pictures.
So, my understanding is, and I spoke with Cliffy this morning, um, is that he collects it, and he, when people come with something metal, he puts it behind the building, and then Rick Porter comes up toward the close of business on Saturdays and takes it away. And I'm not noticing any huge pile of scrap-
Unfortunately, though, our plan states that we only take scrap metal three times a year. It's either two or three, on our dump day is the only time we take scrap steel.
And then there are some chairs, um, like cast iron long furniture kind of chairs that are behind the garage, and I said to Cliffy, you know, these need to move because we're gonna be painting the building. Oh, yeah, yeah, that's not scrap metal, that's jobs that I'm working on. So he's going to get that out of there and take it to his residence, or wherever he works on it.
So the only thing, and I don't have a problem with whoever it is picking it up, because I thought the cans and bottles Cliffy's son took.
Mm-hmm. And there again, I think he takes it. And there again, I think he takes it on a daily basis.
But if, if they're sitting outside and a state inspector shows up, then we could potentially be fined for it. So we've either got to come up with a solution to have it in a container, or it has to be gone immediately.
Not at the end of the day.
Though, I, I can reach out to Mark and ask him on that, but the way he made it sound is if a state inspector showed up at noon, and we've got a pile of scrap metal out behind the building that's only been there for ten minutes. It does not matter, it's a violation, and we are not following our plan.
Well, I, I would appreciate it if you.
Could we get clarification and look into whether we gotta modify the plan or what next month?
Well, before, if, if we're gonna put a container of some sorts down there, we have to amend the plan and.
But I'm saying, yeah, get clarification on when it's gotta be picked up, if we can just, okay, if Cliffy's kid's gonna take the bottles per se, it'll be done daily? Do we need something in the plan? What do we gotta do?
I will reach out to Mark.
Good. We got a system that's working, I hate to screw with that.
I agree, but on the other hand, I don't want to get fined because our system works.
See what we have to do so we can try to keep the system we have without major changes. If there's anything that comes in here, it's not going over the bank.
Right.
So whatever we can do.
No, it's really very neat.
So whatever we can do to promote people bringing things.
Exactly.
Not really all that much either.
No, but I'm just saying, whatever we can get. Because when, if you start saying no, it's going, a lot of it's going over the bank.
Right, and if you looked at the pictures that they sent, I, I think you could open the trunk of a car and throw that scrap steel in there, and it wouldn't affect it that much. But in the eyes of the state, it's, it's wrong, so, because I would just soon not do anything and leave Cliffy alone, because he's keeping things running decent. But when we keep getting inspections, you know, this is their Rutland County Solid Waste Courtesy Inspection, and they said, hey, look, you've got these problems.
That's what I'm saying, let's see what we can do to tweak it, if we, if we can possibly just tweak it and keep things going the way they are.
Yeah, I think it's more of a paperwork issue than.
Keep it as simple as we can.
And I'd have to talk to Tommy, but one of the things that I considered is we have an old truck box here, I think that we use for hot mix or patching blacktop. If we're not using that on a everyday basis, we could stick that out there for the scrap steel, and then it would be in a container.
Right.
But I, I need to check with Tom to see if.
If not, he may have something kicking around that.
Right.
We could grab. I can think of two or three things he might have hiding though. So.
And the only other thing, as far as the, the dump goes, that I think we need to discuss is raising our prices. Because in talking with Mark up through Rutland, they're charging two dollars for a fifteen gallon trash bag up there.
Wow.
Three dollars for a thirty gallon, and five dollars for a fifty-five gallon. And he said that's basically their break-even point. That, you know, the town of Danby is charging the worst near that.
No.
To where?
We're charging fifty cents for fifteen gallons, and a dollar for thirty gallons, and two dollars for the fifty or fifty-five gallon.
I, I think it would be beneficial to the town if we were to start a little slower, maybe, and raise the price of our stickers to a dollar instead of fifty cents. That way, we can start getting back this money we're losing. I don't want people throwing their garbage over the bank, but on the other hand, what was it, sixty thousand we lost last year?
Well, if you go from fifty cents a bag to a dollar a bag, because that's basically what everybody's paying, fifty cents.
Right.
It's not really delineated by bag size for the most part.
For the most part, no, it's not.
So, and I have no, if we enter a dollar, I still think that's fair.
I, I just think that's more than fair.
Because I know what I used to pay to have them come a week, or weekly or monthly at my house.
So keep, keep the sticker thing the same, so, um, a kitchen bag would cost a dollar, a thirty gallon bag would cost two dollars.
Yeah, but I think pretty much everybody's getting delineated at the fifty cent rate.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think a lot of times people just throw a sticker on their bag, no matter what size bag it is, and then it goes.
So.
What do we normally take in on the stickers? Do you know?
I don't know.
Can you help us out, Tim?
Um, the weekly deposits for the town factor have been around probably three or four hundred dollars. And the Stella bill runs about four thousand dollars a month, roughly.
And we bring in three hundred a week?
Every time my bag is full, it's about three hundred dollars.
So there you have it.
Well, if we go to a dollar, it's gonna help.
It's gonna help, and it's not going to be a huge burden all at once. It's not like we'd be raising them to what solid waste is charging. I think it would be a good place to start.
I think that'd be a good way to go. Do you wanna make a motion?
I will make the motion that we raise our, the price of our garbage stickers to a dollar sticker.
I'll second it. You wanna, um, have some time, put notice out on when to take effect?
I think we're gonna have to put notice out on it, and I will ask Mark tomorrow if we have to change that in the plan as well, because we may have to change that in the plan before we can.
Do you wanna make it effective September first? Gives us a couple weeks, and we'll get a website.
Time to talk to Mark, we may have to push it out further.
Let's go to October first, so then if we have to change the plan, we can do it the next meeting.
Who's this Mark?
What?
Who's this Mark?
Mark Shea, he's the director at Rutland County Solid Waste District.
Plus, I'll give us time, we can put notice out.
Any other discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously to increase the price to a dollar per sticker, effective ten one. Anything else on the transfer station, Steve? No. Okay, then our next order of business is old business. And we've had this unfinished piece of business that never got signed, which is called a memorandum of understanding, M O U, between the town of Danby and the United Steelworkers. And this goes back to December second, twenty twenty, and it's a side agreement to the contract that says that we will still keep the road foreman position, but we have the right to have on-call, um, people come in to help out when necessary. Um, because as most everybody knows, we've been functioning with two people rather than three people on the road crew, and when we get into a storm situation or some unexpected event, we need more help. So this outlines, um, the pecking order, if you will, about who gets called first, and if people don't answer their phone, they have ten minutes or something to get back after a voicemail has been left, and it goes on down the chain.
I think sometimes, too, you get into them three or four day storms, to be able to call somebody and just to let people have eight, twelve hours off.
Yeah.
I know when I plowed, sometimes after four days of it, you're on robot mode.
Blinding white snow flying in your face all that time.
Like, you know, you get that tired, you're functioning, but you're not functioning.
At full capacity, yeah.
You're there for the job. If anything unexpected comes up, that's when you're.
Right.
Yeah, and you know how fast that happens when you're plowing.
I do.
It only takes about half a second, and that front tire drops off, and your hands are full.
I remember one time, we'd been about four days, and we were only getting about five, six hours off. And the storm was finally over, and it's first thing in the morning, and I started that Ford, went up zero, and I'm wheeling the wheel, because I knew I had to get out because of a plastic nail box. And as I look in the mirror, there it is, and it's like, you know, I was just that half a second too slow reacting, and as a road, I plowed every time I stopped.
There's an expression for that.
So, I'll quick skim, this looks like everything that Tom and I agreed to. I'd make the motion that we sign it.
Did you?
I'll second it. Steve, I had never seen it before, Steve knows what it was about, so if he said that's what they talked about, I'm good with it.
Looked, everything looked good that I skimmed over.
Yeah, it seems that, um, this just got neglected to be signed. It's, it's nothing new. So, uh, motion is made by Haynes, seconded by Powers to sign the memorandum of understanding. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Any other old business? Okay, under new business, um, we need to.
I'll make the motion that we appoint Tanya Powers as the backup treasurer or signer. I guess that's what I'm appointing her as the signer, yep.
Yep. And I'll second it, so there's no conceived conflict of interest.
Um, how does this go to the next election, since she's being appointed?
Mm-hmm. The, um, town clerk and the treasurer, under state statute, have the privilege of appointing their assistants. And, um, so since we have a new treasurer, she appoints her assistant, and she has selected Tanya Powers. And, um, so the bank needs to have the select board pass a motion to make that signature All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion is passed unanimously. Okay, is there any public comment?
Are you gonna start bringing back the remote meetings now that the COVID's, the new Delta variant is causing more outbreaks?
Probably not.
Why?
Because we don't feel it's necessary, and it was, um, a real hassle having it. If people have something that they want to, um, discuss, they are certainly willing, or perfectly welcome to send a letter, um, for consideration. Any other public comment?
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.